Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board meeting of Monday, June 9th, being held in the Multi Service Center, Room 620, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, and being broadcast by Wareham Media. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:00, and we'll start with a roll call, starting to my left.
Captain.
Hi. You.
Jane Gleason here.
Julie Moran here.
Sam Corbett here.
And the Chair, Carl Schultz, is here. We have a quorum, and the meeting will be open. Before going into the business, I want to note a Scrivener's error in the agenda. Item 4, Public Hearing on the Subdivision Plan for Pierceville Road. The agenda says preliminary subdivision. That should say definitive subdivision. The public hearing notice was correct, and it did say definitive. And this was just a typo in the agenda. So we will be hearing a definitive subdivision tonight. Okay, so the first order of business. Meeting minutes for May 12th, which Josh distributed. Did everybody have a chance to read them? All right. Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion by Sam Corbett, second by Mike Baptiste. Discussion?
None.
Hearing, no discussion.
Captain.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And Carl Schultz votes aye. Item 2 is just an update on an ongoing issue with some solar bond renewals. I believe, Josh, that you've pretty much confirmed that 160 to hone it is not a thing, right?
It appears to me that it's an amended to one that already existed.
So we don't have a separate bond from that. So as I carry it forward, I will strike that one.
Okay.
We are still waiting to hear about Squirrel Island Road. Is that correct?
Yep, and I've reached out to, I believe, who the current operator of the field is, and I've given them till July 14th to respond.
July 14th, which would be our next...
Right, so I'll have an update for you at that planning board meeting.
Great. Any other comment from Town Council, or just that's the update, and we're done? Okay, so I'll remove 160 to hone it from this list unless you come back and say to do otherwise.
And Josh, is it you sent them a demand letter now that you've got the owner? Is that what you've done?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Any more coming up soon?
Proposals for solar or expiring decommissioning bond? I'll have to take a look at the Excel. I believe there were a few that were set to expire in '26, so we'll preemptively get those letters out, so capture them before they expire.
That can... We should confirm for the board members. I think Kent sent an updated spreadsheet out, but we should make sure everybody knows, as well as town folks, what the list we're working from is.
Okay.
Great.
All right. Item 3. On May 12th, the Planning Board voted to close the public hearing on the solar project application for Fearing Hill. Finally, we've got all the way to closing a public hearing after many years of deliberation. At that time, once we close the public hearing, the Planning Board has 60 days to deliberate and certify their decisions. 60 days from May 12th would be July 11th, which is a Friday, and then we'd have to back up because the Clerk's office is closed. So July 10th, we technically... No, not technically, have to have the decision certified. We had discussed the possibility of extending that decision date till July 14th, which is when our first meeting was, and after reviewing the process and the timing, I'm recommending to the Planning Board, and we're going to act tonight, that we do not wait until that time and risk going past the end date and getting a constructive grant on a project because we missed a deadline. So we... I'm gonna... We're going to discuss, but I have a recommendation that we discuss and finalize this on June 23rd at our regularly scheduled Planning Board meeting. Discussion?
I think that's the safest route.
I think that's the appropriate route.
All right, so that does take a couple of weeks out of our ability to process...
Yeah, just a matter of actually getting it done.
Okay.
I mean, I think we've all been working on it, so...
All right. We don't actually need a vote, because this is just an administrative, but I'd like a motion to just schedule that for that night, so we have it on the record.
So moved?
Go ahead.
So I have a motion from Julie Moran to schedule the final review of the Fearing Hill project on June 23rd.
And make it a decision. And vote, vote.
Vote, and then we'll have... Then we'll still give us a couple of weeks to finalize the decision document.
Correct.
I have a motion by Julie Moran, a second by Sam Corbett. Any discussion further? No? Just a vote to memorialize it, please.
Captain.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And the Chair votes aye. So we're going to take this matter up on June 23rd. To that end, on May 12th, we had offered the opportunity to the applicant and to members of the public to submit material regarding findings of fact, conclusions of law, and requested conditions. All of that based on material that was previously on the record. Josh, can you just summarize what we've received?
Um...
I think I just saw something from Nancy and something from Eric, right?
Yeah, so we have the comment letter that was provided by Nancy. Like I said earlier today, I received an email from Eric. I just haven't received the attachments yet.
Okay, so at this point, we're not taking any additional input. If you don't have it in, I'm sorry. We're just... We just took two weeks out of the schedule. We're just not going to have any time to process it. Today was... Actually, Friday was technically the deadline, but today is the deadline. So any citizens who didn't have the opportunity to submit... I guess Mr. Shanahan did not submit anything either. All right, well, so we'll be working on our own. So we're gonna... We'll try and follow the process that we established last time, going through the findings of fact and the conclusions, how it ties back to law, and then we will act. All members of the Planning Board are requested to be prepared in their mind for what that material is, and any vote that you take, yea or nay, needs to be explained.
And supported by the record.
Yeah.
I think that's what we all need to commit to. Thank you.
Okay. So I don't think anything else. This was just a scheduling item. All right, the next item, one of our long... Another long-running, even longer than Fearing Hill.
Too long.
A year ago in May 2024, the Planning Board acted to recommend a release of $800,000 on Phase 2 for a variety of reasons that was not acted on by the Select Board, mostly because the applicant hadn't finished other commitments. I believe the Select Board acted two weeks ago, a week ago...
Yeah.
...to release the $800,000. I believe then we need to vote to release it, or is that... It really was a three-step process, I thought. We voted, the Select Board voted, then came back to us.
I don't think so. I mean, if that's the way we want to handle it...
Sorry, if you don't think we need to take action, I'll go back and...
It goes from here to them. They can release the bond, we can't.
I think there's another step that we're supposed to take, but let's not debate it tonight. I have it in my notes.
I'll take a look at the process again, and we'll iron it out.
Yeah, so that was not the complete remaining value of the surety, correct? There should be money left?
I think there's estimate like 200 grand, somewhere around there.
And there's work that remains to be completed on Phase 2.
I believe so, yeah.
Correct. And then there's... We have not released any covenant or lots in Phase 3, correct?
I don't believe so. I'll take a look.
And Phase 4, construction has begun or not? I see clearing, but I don't know if they're actually doing construction.
Yeah, just from my own memory, is Phase 4 Starbird Drive?
No, Phase 4 is to the right of Baypoint Drive, coming in from Montsett Avenue.
Okay, immediately when you enter the...
It was the old MIPA... Not MIPA. What was the name of the land that we bought from?
I don't remember.
Yeah, it was the WRA transfer.
Little piece in front.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right. All right, so we have no action on that. There is remaining value on Phase 2, Phase 3. They shouldn't be selling lots in Phase 3 or Phase 4 yet. Okay, nothing, no other discussion there. That was quick. All right. We have a project that has been going since, I think, the fall. Is anyone here for Peyton Estates?
I don't think they were going to attend.
Okay, okay. So basically, the subdivision is built. I had a couple of questions. I don't want to vote if they're not here.
Okay.
I want to know what's going on with the HOA and the road ownership.
Okay.
I couldn't find it. He didn't mention it. We could act, but I... They... I'm not sure what... Where we ended up on the HOA.
Okay.
And was it conditioned, correct?
I... That's... I have to go back. That's... I haven't... You sent me the document, I didn't get a chance. I thought it was a condition of the approval. Do you have the approval document in front of you?
Generally is.
I just need to know who's going to own the roads, because the town is not going to own the roads.
Correct. Um... Yeah, can you table it just for a little bit, and I can...
Okay.
I'll look at it.
Let's come back to this thing. If you could just get Brad to tell you what we're doing, and then I had an open question, even though it was not conditional. Have... Or maybe Mr. Lentle knows. Has the pole issue been completely... It's not a dependency, but I just want to know. Still an ongoing issue.
Ever sourced, threw a wrench into it the other day, but it'll get done.
Okay. It's not a dependency for this, but I want to continue to monitor it because it's so important to town. Okay, I'll table this for now. All right. All right, we have a public hearing for this evening. Out of the box. There we go. Notice of Public Hearing. The Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June 9th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in Room 520 of the Multi Service Center at 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571, to consider petition 3-25 for the definitive residential subdivision plan from the requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81L, for six lots on 7.5 acres, to Rick Valenti of PO Box 256, Carver, Massachusetts, 02355, for his subject property located at Pierceville Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, Assessor's Map 98, Lot 1031, in the MR 30 zoning district. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sam Corbett, second by Mike Baptiste. All in favor of opening the public hearing, starting to my left.
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And the Chair votes aye. We have a vote of 5:00 to open the public hearing. The public hearing is now in session. Is there anyone representing the applicant? Can you state your name and address?
William Connolly, Zenith Consulting Engineers, for the record.
Okay, are you... You're a professional engineer?
I am an EIT.
I don't know what that is.
Engineer in training, on behalf of the client.
But you're going to give professional testimony?
Yes.
Can you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear that all the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. All right, so normally...
I can set the plan up if you want me to present it.
Go ahead, and then when you come back, just spell your name for Patty. Can you face it so John can see it, and then it'll...
Yeah, the camera over there.
Oh, the camera's over here? Okay, great.
All right, so if I put it here, is that okay? Yeah, no problem.
We have new cameras, I guess. That cam... I don't remember ever having that camera before, but...
No, we have three. That one to this room, and that one.
Okay. So a couple of procedural requests before you start. First, spell your name for Patty.
William Connolly, W-I-L-L-I-M-C-O-N-N-E-L-L-Y.
Okay, and from the...
Zenith Consulting Engineers.
And then do me a favor. For every document that you represent, please read the document name and the date for the record, so that we capture all the documents being... So the way we normally do this is we take... We let you make a presentation. For this is a preliminary session, we'll have to schedule our consulting engineer to do a review, and this will be continued. But you can make an overview, and then we'll let anyone from the public ask questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Go for it.
All right, so the project before you is a six-lot residential subdivision known as Cranberry Pond Estates. It's located on the northern side of Pierceville Road. There was a Form B approved by the Board, I believe, October 30th of last year, so you might be familiar with the project and where before you with the definitive subdivision So this is the cover sheet.
Dated, just...
Dated March 17th, 2025.
Okay, thank you.
Go to the existing conditions plan. Here's the existing conditions plan dated March 17th, 2025. The existing lot is a 7.52 acre wooded site located to the north of Pierceville Road. There's a pond on the northerly portion of the site, as you can see here, as well as a cranberry bog that's located just off-site to the north. The site is not in any flood zone, NHESP, ACEC, Zone 2, Zone A, outstanding resource water, any resource area. The topography on the site goes from roughly elevation 69 at the road to elevation 72 to the rear of the lot, so it's a relatively flat site. So here's the lotting sheet dated March 17th, 2025. We're proposing six lots. All of them meet the minimum requirement for the 30,000 square feet and 150 feet of frontage. As you can see, we show the 150-foot diameter building circle on each lot. And then there's also Parcel A, which is not to be considered a buildable lot. The roadway will be named Giovanna Way. It's private, variable width...
You're proposing...
The proposed roadway will be called Giovanna Way. It's variable width, private road with a cul-de-sac dead end, which will have a diameter of 120 feet.
You stated it's variable width. Does it meet the minimum width requirement for the whole length?
Yeah, so most of the roadway is 40 feet wide. It's just the entrance is a little bit wider, just because of the way that it was configured.
Okay. So at no point is it narrower than the required...
Correct.
Okay.
So here's the grading and drainage plan dated March 17th, 2025. As you can see, we have six single-family houses laid out. They're going to be serviced by onsite septic and municipal water. We've already performed park tests out here in all the areas of the septic systems, as well as some observation holes where the drainage is going. We're proposing an eight-inch water main, which will run down the street. The roadway is 749 feet with a dead-end cul-de-sac with a 100-foot outside diameter at the end. The roadway is 22-foot wide with Cape Cod berm, and because we're over four lots, we're required to meet stormwater management standards, so we've done that with a couple of catch basins at the low spot, a deep sump manhole, a sediment forbey, and an infiltration basin, which will overflow. The emergency spillway will go into the existing pond to the north of the lot. We also proposed a couple leaching pits to the rear of some of the... There might just be one, actually, just one leaching pit in the rear of that lot to infiltrate any runoff that can't get into the roadway. We are asking for a few waivers, the first being the requirement of a tree plan. We show the location of all the trees on the grading and drainage plan. We felt that was...
You requested a waiver. We'll take it under consideration.
Yeah, so the requirement of street trees within the right-of-way. We're just proposing them in the front yards of the proposed houses. This was just a request of the client. We're requesting a waiver for the requirement of sidewalks on both sides of the street. Being such a small subdivision, we just felt that it might be unnecessary, impervious area to be adding sidewalks on both sides of the road, so we're requesting a waiver from that. And then the requirement of a 24-foot wide paved road with sidewalks. The roadway we're proposing is 22 feet wide.
So you don't meet the minimum standard, even though that's what you said?
So the right-of-way meets the 40-foot minimum.
But not the road?
The roadway, we propose 22-foot wide.
Okay. All right, we'll consider that as well, but I'm not happy about that.
Okay, sorry about that.
I know, but you... Don't be sorry. We have to deliberate. That's why we reviewed the plan.
So I think that's about it. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions at this point.
Okay, well, I have a list, although this is early days, so until Phil's report comes in. Mike, do you have any questions at this point?
No, not right now, no.
Jane?
Not at this point.
Sam? Julie?
No, not right this moment.
Okay. Just some things. You don't have to answer them tonight, but what percentage of open space is being overall open space after development? I just want to get a sense of that for the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to get it on the record and confirm.
Yeah, I don't have that answer right now, but I can certainly get that.
You talked about stormwater runoff into the catch basins. We'll wait for the stormwater plan evaluation. Did you do Vernal Pool Stub Survey?
I don't believe so, no.
Endangered Species Review?
As far as I know, it's not located in any natural heritage.
Did you do the review, or did you...
Well, yeah, we looked at if it's located within the priority area.
But I didn't see a statement one way or the other in the documentary evidence, so we should get documentary evidence that your position, that it...
Okay.
It doesn't... All of those reviews need to have a statement of either not applicable in your opinion, but I won't... It should be in the documentary evidence. Is this going to be... You said town water, town sewer?
Yes, municipal water, private septic, so...
Oh, private septic, okay. So these are going to be Title IX septic?
Just... It looks like the private septic, they're all within the boundaries, every... There's no... There's no shared septic, they're all...
No shared septic. They all have individual septic systems, which these boxes shown on the grading and drainage plan, that's what represents those, and then detailed septic designs will be submitted at some point.
Yeah, well, that would be part of each building lot, but just in general, I want to get an overview of the thing. And then we'll talk about the detail and the specifics of the road and the substrata and the top and all that. I have a list of conditions we can go over for that. You brought in the abutter notifications, everybody within 300 feet. What about the folks across jurisdictional boundaries? Were there some abutters over...
In Rochester.
In Rochester?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
I believe that...
I could get an answer on that.
Yeah, we need to know that they were notified, and Josh, we need to notify the other planning boards that we're hearing this, right?
Yeah, which would have been sent out in our mailings. That's already taken care of.
Okay. All right, yeah, we need to confirm that the abutters across jurisdictional boundaries were notified. Do we have a certification from the tax collector that all is... Is it dated? Does it have a date on it? I didn't look. The darn things we've been getting have been signed with no dates. All right, so we'll... Josh, we can just double-check. Just double-check in your application that Mr. Foster or his office... It's not Mr. Foster anymore. Who's going to be doing this?
It is still Mr. Foster.
It is? Okay. Just make sure... A lot of times they sign it, but they don't put a date on it, which is not as helpful as it could be. Should discuss traffic at some point. I don't know if we need a traffic study, but let's talk about traffic on Pierceville What is your plans for... You said it's going to be a private road. Who's going to own the road? Are you going to establish an HOA? There's a requirement for an HOA.
Yeah, I believe so.
So that... All that documentation needs to be prepared and submitted? Okay, which I didn't see in the application.
It's really street and drainage, correct? The HOA is responsible for street and drainage, correct?
Street and drainage, yes. Street clearing, street maintenance.
You could get us that information.
Yeah, we can speak to the client about...
Well, we've... The HOA documents got to be submitted and got to be recorded. I don't remember what you said about streetlights.
So I think this was... It was part of the Form B application.
That's okay. That's what we talked about then, but we need to have streetlights discussed on this final plan.
So instead of doing the... So we're providing street lanterns for each driveway, and then we're also providing...
Which is a waiver, then, that you need to get a request?
Yes.
And what about a streetlight at the entrance to the...
So at the intersection, we're proposing a utility pole with a light on it.
Okay.
Yeah, and then a lantern for each driveway.
All right, well, we need to review all that, and that would need to be approved and discussed.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we haven't gotten any conditions yet. We'll have standard conditions.
I'm looking at the waivers, sorry.
All the waivers.
Ownership of the pond?
Huh?
Ownership of the pond?
You can ask, I don't...
Yeah. Who's going to own the pond?
So that is something I'm not sure of at this time.
That would have to be covered under the HOA?
Yeah, that's something I can get an answer to.
As well as the Lot A or whatever, the non-buildable lot that will need to be maintained?
Right, which includes the pond. Right, which includes the pond.
Parcel A, yeah.
The HOA is going to carry the liability on the pond then.
Right.
All of that needs to be enumerated and stipulated and defined.
Understood.
And if there's easements in connection with the access to the pond, you'll need to show them on the plan and also those as well.
Okay, these are just questions.
Yeah.
So that way you come back, you're prepared.
Right.
I got one.
Go ahead.
You don't plan on clear, clear-cutting this whole site, I hope?
No, so this kind of squiggly line here that you see that wraps around, that's the proposed tree line. We never really clear more trees than we need to, but we wanted to give at least 50, 60 feet for each backyard. I don't know if you've seen the site in person, but the pine trees out there are pretty significant in size, so just for safety purposes, we always try to give at least 50, 60-foot backyards.
Okay, any other discussion?
So I think when it came for the preliminary, the pond was going to be part of the lot.
Yeah, yeah, it's...
So it's changed, yeah.
Yeah. Any input from the town planner?
As of right now, no.
Question, is Mr. Cudaro on the phone?
Yes.
Mr. Cudaro, you have any questions or comments? I know you haven't been commissioned to do the study yet, but any preliminary questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually did have one. I just wanted to learn more about the waivers that they're requesting. I know the Form B, they said a sidewalk on one side of the plan, but now tonight they're requesting a waiver from both sides of the plan?
Yeah, it seems like that, yeah, there's some changes.
Yeah. I would ask through you, Mr. Chair, that they provide some backup as to why they're requesting that additional waiver on the sidewalk now versus what you approved under the Form B.
Great, thank you. And just for my planning purposes, how long will you need to do your preliminary review? Once you get the funding and all that, yeah?
Sure. So if, when you elect to continue this evening, I would suggest you go two meetings out, two weeks for us to perform the review and allow the materials to get back to the applicant, such that they can return to you in a month's time, if that's what they so choose to do.
Okay, great. Have you funded the 53G account yet?
I do not know the answer to that.
I just requested an estimate from Phil, so.
Okay, great. All right, so getting that funded will then enable him to start his review, and that will keep the process moving, so.
Okay.
Welcome, I haven't seen you in a while.
It's been a minute. We're going to, I'm going to be back soon with this whole change in the site plan review, so I'll see you going forward now every other week.
Okay, good, good. So that's all your questions or comments? You're ready to go?
We're ready to go. I'm going to reserve, obviously, further comments and questions until we take a deeper dive into the application. But just, the question on the waiver was something that caught my ear tonight as he was presenting.
Right, okay, thanks. So yeah, you're going to want to have good justification for every waiver, so we can deliberate, every waiver. That doesn't mean you won't get it, it just means we need to establish the rationale.
Yeah, understood.
And you're good, Josh?
No more from the board?
Any citizens comment? Ms. McHale, please come forward.
Thank you, Nancy McHale, Farring Hill Road. I have no particular questions about the engineering of this. I have a major question about how does one find the information about it? And the reason I'm asking is that on the agenda, there's no plan number. And when you look up the Pierceville Road...
We are still struggling with how...
Right.
Josh, we're still using two different numbering schemes, and it confuses me. But can you, the data is on open.gov, it's Plan 25-4?
No, 20, it looks like there's a Plan 24-5.
Okay, I had the...
Which 24-5 was the preliminary subdivision, but I don't see a definitive subdivision there.
The app, I found it, so whatever the number...
It is Plan 25-4.
That's what I thought, 25-4. And it is the definitive plan, and I downloaded all the documents, and so they're there.
Okay, and what is the address that goes with that?
It's zero Pierceville Road, I believe is the address, but don't search for it by address, you'll never find it.
Well, I found the 24-5 by searching Pierceville Road.
I think it's zero, but use 25-4 for this project. And Josh, we're confusing everyone.
Yeah, we're...
Right, because on the back, there's your schedule has 3-25, right?
Which is what I read in the public record, and which is why I paused when I came to that. I'm still struggling with how we're numbering projects.
Yeah, let me put some real thought into it. I'll take a deep dive into that.
Well, and I'm okay with whatever. I have the same problem the citizens have. Depending on the numbering scheme, if you use 3-25, you will never find that on open.gov. And if you go to open.gov, 3.25 isn't posted anywhere. So we've got to make it easier for citizens to find these plans.
Or...
So 25-4 is...
25-4, okay, so we're not linking the preliminary to the...
They're different project numbers, but it's the same map and lot reference.
Right, but my point is, is they're in there under two different addresses. The 24-5 is in there under 39 Pierceville Road.
Forget the, forget, okay, I accept what you're saying. We need to look at the map and lot number, that's...
You can't search by map and lot number.
Yeah, I thought you could, but okay.
No.
All right, don't take me...
I haven't been able to search by map and lot number.
I struggle with all those things, so I start with the plan number and go from there, but it should be the same map and lot reference for the preliminary subdivision. And if it's not, then we have another kind of...
Snafu.
No, just tracking, tracking issue, because map and lot numbers change over time.
Sometimes they do, granted, absolutely.
Addresses change the...
Just trying to get the ducks in order before there's...
Your comments are observed, and we will continue to try and improve.
We understand this, you know, we're not getting rid of the good in striving for the perfect.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks, guys.
Okay, so Josh, we just have to keep working on it.
Yeah, I took some notes, thank you.
Any other comment? All right, is there anybody in the ether, John? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand, I apologize.
Sorry.
Please come forward. State your name for the record, your address, spell your name, please.
Joyce Kristofolsky, 49...
Oh, please spell that one for Patty.
Come on out. 49 Pierceville Road, J O Y C E, K R Y S T O F O L S K I. So the couple of things that came out for me on the plan is this idea of an HOA. I would like to know how it's going to be enforced when the roads become in need of repair? Who's responsible for getting it done?
The HOA would be responsible.
Oh, I'm aware of that. I work for a town, and I have seen that there becomes issues with residents that buy the house, and the road is failing, and now it's, oh, the town should pay for it. And then the other issue is tree management. It's a beautiful forest right now. When they start removing these giant pines, you now weaken the roots of the surrounding trees, and what happens when it falls on our property and takes out our fence? It's also destroying the buffer that now currently exists. So I just am curious what the plan will be to sort of restore that or prevent the issues.
Yeah. Now, just, some of that will be building lot specific, so the board in its current hearing is only, well, if you work for a town, you know, we're only focused, we're only focused on the road and utilities and things like that, so.
So those will be addressed going forward, and how that's going to...
The road, absolutely, the sewer, all utilities, street planting, sidewalk.
Okay.
But each lot, once it gets developed, some of these, your questions would be then, like the tree. But we will have to know who's going to own the road.
Yeah, all right.
And the applicant should fully understand the town is not accepting new roads at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please.
How we doing?
Good, thanks.
John Kristofolsky, 53 Pierceville Road, Westman.
Spell it again for Patty.
K R Y S T O F O L S K I.
It's very phonetic, it's not as hard as it sounds.
I just have a question, like Joyce said, about the abutter as well. Is there going to be a buffer zone between the existing property and the new development?
So I'm assuming you're the lot to the south here, this property right here.
I'm the second. Well, you have a proposed road, that's Joyce, I'm the right next door to the left.
Okay.
In the back there, I see the dotted lines. What's going to be the buffer zone there?
Um...
As well as along County Road for all those, because it looks the same.
Yeah, so these lots back here, it looks like we roughly have probably an 80 to 100-foot buffer between the tree line in the back and the abutting properties to the rear.
Yep.
And then, yeah, this lot here, I'm not quite sure, because we don't know where that existing tree line goes to.
The proposed road is right across from Papier Mill Road. I mean, Papier Mill Road's always been a dangerous, I'm going to call it an intersection, but you come to the end of it, there's been car crashes that go straight through because the road comes...
You can't tell, you're supposed to stop there.
Correct, the road comes up on you. So now if you're putting an entrance there, like you say, you're proposing to put a light there to illuminate it.
At night, that would be a critical...
Could be helpful.
Yeah.
And then, it shows two lots there, looks like they own that. You guys keep calling it a pond. What's the name of that pond?
I don't think it has a name, it's more like a reservoir that...
Correct. I grew up all my life...
It was a water supply for the bog, right?
Right, I grew up all my life right there on the county road, so, right, we knew it as a reservoir, but when you guys say pond, I'm like, it's not a pond. And then they also triple the size of that.
A water feature.
Yeah. And then two lots, look like they're going to own that reservoir?
So parcel A in the back there, the big piece, is that what you're referring to?
Well, yeah, I have the same that you do.
Yeah.
This here looks like they're going to own three-quarters of that reservoir.
Yep, so this is going to be left as just parcel A, it's just not going to be a buildable lot.
And, but we need to clearly establish the ownership, and I assume the homeowner association is going to own it and be responsible for it.
Yeah, so that's what I'm going to have to get an answer to, I'm not sure about that right now, who's going to...
Right, when he says homeowner, it's like, are the bogs incorporated with that property?
I don't know for sure at this time.
These are good questions, we'll let them take it and bring it back.
Yeah, that's a really good question.
And then, like you say, if I'm going to have 80 to 100 here, this is all considered wetland, right, the reservoir?
Yes.
You're clearing trees?
Well, it's, yeah, resource area, so we will be going in front of conservation. That's treated essentially like a wetland, yes.
Right, so you can't remove trees, what, 50 feet?
They have a 30-foot, no touch.
30, no touch? What about the tree clearing?
That would be all from the order conditions.
Yeah, that would be conservation commission.
And we won't approve this until that's all stipulated and documented.
I was just curious, because like, the homeowner, if they buy that land, like, you know, is that theirs? Are the bogs still going to pull the water from it?
I don't know the answer to that, that's something I can...
Please don't speak from the audience. It needs to be on the record, it needs to be substantiated and submitted with the application.
Mr. Chair, when individual lots are proposed to be constructed, they'll individually go in from the commission as well.
Yes, each one of those will also have to do that, yes. But if that resource area is going to be owned, and if there's expectation, as the gentleman says, that water is going to be drawn from that, those agreements all need to be established and documented and recorded.
And I assume if there's any restrictions, covenants, anything relative to the water, that those will, you'll provide that with us, to us as well?
Yeah, it's all just completing your application.
Who has rights and who doesn't at this point?
What are you looking for?
Nothing.
There's a plan, if you want, that's the stormwater report.
Nope, that's all I have.
Great, just get your questions on there, we don't have, he doesn't have to answer them tonight, we'll be back, and, but make sure you come back and you get your questions answered.
Is the proposed sidewalk on the left side existent or the right side? What do you have?
There is no proposed sidewalk.
Not right now?
That was Mr. Cudaro. The original plan had a single sidewalk, he's asking to remove it. We haven't agreed to that yet.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
I just have a question, maybe, Pierceville Road, I'm not as familiar with, is there a sidewalk on Pierceville Road?
I don't believe so, no.
No, there's not many streetlights either.
Yeah.
It's pretty dark out there at night. I got lost the last time I was out.
Very dangerous, like, my address comes up all the way down the street, so I live at 41.
Okay, great. All right, so I don't hear any more discussion, so we're going to end discussion for tonight. When will you be ready to come back? Mr. Cudaro suggested July 14th, if it's funded, and he should be able to complete his study. What else is on the agenda for the 14th?
I don't think we have anything scheduled for the 14th as of right now.
Okay, we pulled Farring Hill off, so, all right, is there anything else in the pipeline?
We got an application for an A and R, and there's an application for site plan review.
The site plan review you scheduled for the 23rd, is that one?
Yeah.
Okay. I wish we had talked about that, but okay.
It's still going to require peer review and everything, so very unlikely that you will be ready.
The peer review's done? Wow, the first report?
Yeah, not completely.
All right, would you be available for the 14th of July?
Yes.
Okay, and ready for answers to all these, some of or all these questions?
Yes.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion to continue this till July 14th.
Second?
A motion by Sam Corbett, second by Julie Moran. Any discussion? Mike? Okay, then let's take a vote, roll call.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And the chair votes aye. We'll see you on the 14th.
All right, thank you all for your time.
No, thanks for coming. This is the first night, so that's why we ask all the questions, so you know what to go back and work on.
Yep.
Okay, all right, that's that. Where did I put my agenda? So the public hearing will be continued. Okay, the next item. The town is in the process of soliciting an RFP to work on improving the zoning bylaws. There's been a change in venue, so Julie, did you get an answer, or Josh, it's going to be run by the select board now?
Correct. So the RFP was submitted under the town administrator's jurisdiction. The select board has determined that they would sign the contract, so presumably, they will then be in charge of the execution of the RFP process, the review of all contracts, and the ultimate award, notification of the award. There is a series of public meetings that are associated with the RFP, which will be handled by the consultant who is appointed, or who is awarded the contract. So it appears, I guess I will be working directly with the select board to make sure that we're moving ahead with the RFP process, because we want to make sure that everything is completed before the spring town meeting, which will be here before we know it. So I will reach out tomorrow and determine where we are and try to work directly with... So I will reach out tomorrow and determine where we are and try to work directly with the select board to move forward with the award.
So I'd like a motion...
And the RFP and the award.
I have a question, a couple of questions.
Oh, okay.
Why did the selectmen go forward with reviewing the zoning?
I have no idea.
I don't know.
Doesn't make any sense.
I can't answer that question. It was a surprise to us.
Did each selectman know the zoning laws that they're dealing?
I can't answer that question.
No.
The way that... Ken, you're not on, right?
No.
All right. I think they're going to form a committee. It's going to be given to a committee. But I don't know. I can't answer that. We were not involved in the decision. So what I would like is a motion to authorize, in the interim, for Ms. Moran to represent the planning board to any such committee that gets appointed.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? You'd be willing to do that right now? Okay. So any discussion? No, let's...
So the selectmen are taking over and in charge of everything? Well, they do it now anyway, but it's seen over there.
I...
I have a good example of that.
I can't comment what their plan is that weren't involved in the discussion.
This country's going to shit, I'm telling you.
Okay.
Just for the record, I will vote no on anything to do with this, except you being out representing me.
Well, she's going to do the fighting for us, and we're behind her.
Well, in any case, it will still have to come... By law, it will have to come back to us for public hearing.
I understand that.
And then we will have to make the recommendation to town meeting. The planning board has worked for two years to get this RFP done, and at the last minute, it was a surprise to find out that we...
But they're funding it as well.
No, they're not funding it. The state's funding it.
State's, it's a grant.
The state is funding 85% and 15% contribution from the town.
No, 90 and 10.
90 and 10, okay.
Yeah. 90% is grant, 10% is the town.
And Julie did all the work to get that. And Sherry helped, but a lot. Not minimizing your contribution.
I'm not telling.
But anyway, I can't answer any of your questions because we didn't know this happened.
Is this legal at all? I mean, as Mike said, they're taking over zoning.
They can... They have the right to issue the contract. They can work with it.
And that's what they did. They executed the contract.
They have the right to... Any citizen can rewrite zoning bylaws. It still has to come back.
A common courtesy, though. They should talk to the people involved, you know?
The concept was always to have the planning office completely involved in this.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's changed, really.
I don't think it's a terrible idea for there to be a committee created to represent, you know, the body of the town.
Right. That was always going to be the approach.
Yeah.
They're just...
I'm not upset... I'm upset that it was done the way that it was, but I'm not upset at the proposed process of it. The process makes sense. The way that it's being handled.
It is.
Exactly my feeling. It was done poorly.
And I will push it ahead because the spring will be here before we know it, and we don't want to jeopardize that grant. That's a lot of money.
Right.
And the citizens need to understand, if we don't fix the zoning bylaws, we have a terrible foundation for moving forward, for further improvements.
Sure.
The bylaws are inconsistent, and for no bad reason. They are a pastiche of years of incremental attempts at fixing issues and problems. All right. So I think we took the vote. Did we take the... Did we... And we voted. Did we vote?
Yep.
No.
No, we didn't vote.
Okay. So a vote to have Ms. Moran represent us?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Julie Moran, I guess, aye, yeah.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And Carl Schultz votes aye. Okay. So keep us abreast.
Yep. I will.
Mr. Chair, would you mind just jumping back to the table?
Sure. We could take up...
Okay. So I've reviewed your conditions of approval. I didn't find anything specifically related to ownership maintenance of the road.
That's my concern, yes, so...
Right. So you don't really have anything directly related to the road. You do have a condition that says a maintenance agreement for the stormwater will be established. It will be reviewed by town council. It shall remain in force and operation for the duration of the subdivision. But really, it talks about the stormwater system, retention basin, and all other common land within the approved subdivision.
Right. But it doesn't have to be an HOA. If there's no HOA, then every lot owner owns to the middle of the road.
Correct.
And they're responsible.
And I will...
I just wanted to be clear on what the plan for the subdivision was.
Gotcha.
So it doesn't look like there's going to be an HOA.
No, it doesn't appear that way. And it's also worth noting that any town road acceptance would go through the road commissioners. The road commissioners are the select board.
And they have to go to town meeting ultimately.
Correct.
So...
And right now, the town is not taking on new roads.
But just in reality, if you go to some of the subdivisions that are HOAs, the roads are virtually impassable.
Yes, one of the...
Yeah. I think what you see with...
When you go to Indian Mountain, it has potholes the size of Volkswagen's.
Yeah. I think what you see is you see that these HOAs are created. Everyone says, yeah, it's a great idea. We'll all maintain it. And then they never create any type of fund to take care of the roads. And then when they become so poor, it's a fight to get funds from the members of the HOA.
What we need to do is fight to prevent the town from stepping in because they didn't plan.
Yeah. And what I would say is there are a lot of private roads in Wareham that the town has...
60% of the roads.
And I would say the town has unofficially adopted them. We are maintaining them in one way or another.
It just plays right into the hand of these developers and say, well, there's no point, and we don't have to worry about it because the town...
Back in history with these private roads, a good example is Lynnwood's Estates. That's still a private road. The one down by the sewer plant off of Sandwich Road. We used to call it Clem's Road. Clem Slayne lived there. That was private when it was built. It was always private. The manhole probably was six feet above the road. It was so beat down. They beat us, beat us, beat us. They're supposed to come before the planning board for recommendations for approval of a road. The selectmen took over. That's when they started approving roads in the town, and they fixed it.
Yeah. Well, that's...
Like, here we go again. The selectmen, they want to run the show. Come on, man.
Okay, Mike. Let's not stray too far from our... Let's not stray too far from our remit here.
So yo, your peer review engineer, Phil Cudaro, is available if you have any further questions on the Peyton Estates.
Do we want to act then? My only question was, it's going to be private road owned by the homeowners. His report said the words. Phil, are you still on? Nope.
No.
I am. Sorry.
So Peyton Estates is all done, right?
Yes. Yeah.
All right. So I think they submitted a form in. First form in I've seen, you wrote it, right?
I did.
We finally got a form in with all the inspection reports. We're making progress. We got a form in.
Yeah. I think that will be our glowing example of what to show applicants moving forward. This is how your form should appear in front of the board.
Right.
It was very well done.
So thank you for that. So I believe the work is complete. Answered my question about the homeowners association. Now, I don't know how that form of agreement for maintaining the stormwater system, that's a condition. I don't know how it gets documented or enforced.